Seven oh two, and we'll do the roll call.
Steve?
Steve Hicken in Lake Enchantment.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
I'm Johnson, Whittle Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Eric Powers, Staff Planner.
Approve the agenda.
We'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes from the previous meeting of June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
I just had one clarification maybe for the story for the six B. Did he withdraw his application or?
He did, yeah.
And is that stated here in the minutes?
It is under, in that, under six B, it is in the one, two, three, end of the fourth paragraph. I note that he withdrew the request.
And I just have one.
Last question, in conclusion, he said he wishes to withdraw the request as submitted. Okay, and then that's how it was stated. From the last paragraph, it just sounded like he was coming back future.
Right, I could, and that's, that was my understanding too, that he was going to submit an updated application, because we weren't going to require him to pay.
Oh, that, right, we were gonna give him his feedback.
So I got, yeah, I could clarify that a little bit.
So, just out of curiosity, the original permit is null and void?
The original one issued, no, that one is still. That one is still active.
Okay, but so that's, but McCarthy proposed, rather than withdraw the application, modify the application to include only one parcel tax ID where the mineral extraction operations currently exist. So why would he modify the application for something that already exists?
Because the existing permit that was granted in January, whatever, the original date of issue was, that one was for seventeen-ish acres. And as I understand it, as I recall, our discussion that night at the previous meeting was to modify it to include a hundred, about one hundred acres on that one parcel tax ID number.
I don't remember the specifics of that, but okay, we'll take a look at it, I guess.
Yeah, maybe if we could clarify that a little bit too, because I was kinda wondering about that, because it kinda sounds like Jason suggested that, but he, from what I remember, he came up with that on his own, he said what, he withdrew it?
Yep. The, the request as was presented to the planning commission for the entire four hundred acres or whatever it was, that unique request was withdrawn by the other.
So, I don't have anything to be corrected on the minutes, but on the recording, I think I misspoke about when I stated that we had gotten a letter from the Travel Marquette people. It actually was a letter from someone who spilled out a survey sent to the Travel Marquette people about the roundabouts. So just so it wasn't Travel Marquette people sending us a letter. Okay? Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting, June twenty-sixth.
With the suggested edits?
Sure, with the suggestion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, this is the time for public comment. Anyone would like to come forward at this time? Looks like no one's coming forward, so we will move on to six A, new business, short Elliot Hendrickson, twenty twenty-four draft master plan, community survey review and discussion. Eric?
So included in your packet tonight is, admittedly, it's a little cumbersome the way it printed out in the packet, but is the entire proposed draft survey for your review and any comments or edits or suggestions you have to change it. The link in the staff report is there that you can test it out, that is a link that I can send out tomorrow, so you don't have to type it in manually, for you to test it out. And I would be open, really not too much to report on, really that is the draft survey and it's for you guys, for us to discuss it tonight, for any edits or suggestions that you have. Danny did send some suggested comments, and I think everybody, yep, everybody was copied on that, so those will be incorporated. Other than that, I would leave it open, open for discussion.
There's one thing, I got an email link a few days back for this, to something to do with this, I believe.
Okay.
Didn't work, so I don't know if it wasn't current, I think it asked for an existing password to log in, it was some sort of login thing for, for this, so I'm not sure, you know, what it was for.
Do you recall who the sender was?
I'd have to take a look, I save everything, so I could pass it on to you. But I think it was associated with this.
Okay.
So Jim, do you wanna go each item, or do you want us to do all our comments and the next person to do theirs?
I think we just go person to person, go through everything, and you wanna start or not?
I'll start.
Yeah.
So, I have a couple questions. On the second page of what I have, under number one, it says, improve fire protection services. I don't, we also have EMS services, and I think it's important that people rate that. They could rate it together, or they could rate them separately, but I think we as a township need to include the EMS services. Do people value them, do they think they're not important, however, because that, anyways, I could go on and on. And then, when we get to number three, which starts with township services, so, so this is a grammatical thing and they can decide how they want it, but they keep going back and forth between township and market township. So it needs to be one or the other, otherwise, some English major is going to like be out there. Then it has dissatisfied twice. We don't want that many people dissatisfied twice. Then it says, overall quality of garbage collection. Is that trash collection, garbage collection? So, it doesn't matter to me, just so it's clear to the customers doing this. Do we call it garbage, do we call it trash?
Well, we got.
So should it say garbage slash trash? Or should it just say garbage? It doesn't matter, but, but I, I think you're gonna have some people.
Put garbage slash, slash.
Trash.
And there it is.
And then, and we don't do any collecting of leaves and trees and all that, but that is part of a service that we provide to them. So are they satisfied with our, what are those days called, when you can bring your stuff up to North Country Sales? Not sales, North Country.
Like additional garbage.
So are they, the overall quality of the drop off?
Drop off recycling, or?
Drop off trash, what is it called?
And that, to be clear, that's includes like yard waste, like brush as well as larger items like home furniture.
Yep, yep.
It's kinda called First Wednesday.
Yeah, we call it First Wednesday, I don't know what people call it. Then, I think we should ask them about their feeling of the overall quality of housing. We're asking about a lot of overall quality, what is the overall quality of the housing options in the township?
Sure.
But you don't have to, you can throw everything out, I mean, they're just suggestions. Overall quality of police services, I think I may be okay with that, till I get to the last page and then I'll ask that. And then fire services and EMS, or emergency medical services, or what do people call that? I mean, they don't call it fire service, that's what I'll tell you, they call it.
Two separate lines for that, or you want fire service slash?
I don't know, I don't know what they do in other communities. Well, it, it is provided by the same group, but it is really very different and requires the staff to have very different education and requirements, so, and it costs us as taxpayers to pay for the equipment to provide it. So how, how important is it?
I think it should be two different lines.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, and then that was just my township thing.
I think with that dissatisfied, it's not really, there are twice, they just forgot very dissatisfied on one of them.
Oh, that could be.
Because it says satisfied, very satisfied.
Oh, there's, yeah, usually, you have five or three choices, you're giving people lots of choices. And then I went almost to the last page, where it says, which of the following best describes the location of your home? So we have people that would fit in rural that have less than an acre of land. Their houses on, it's a lot size. So, so what are we looking to know, where people live?
That, I think you could eliminate property one acre in size or larger, because I think under urban, when we say Trowbridge Park, that's kind of the.
Then that would be the question, yeah.
If you live in Trowbridge Park, if you live somewhere else.
Right, okay, perfect. And then under level of education, I think it's important for us to know if people are trade school graduates here. I think we have a lot of blue collar workers that went to trade school. So I don't know why they don't ask that question, but you can ask the people that ask that question, because trade schools can be five years in length. I'm glad to know that I'm not in the oldest group, yet. And I don't make the most money, yet. I do know that there are people that make over five hundred thousand, and we're not asking that. But ask our people that we hired if over two hundred and fifty thousand is the very top range, because there are lots of people that make that much money in a household in today's world, and they live here. That, that's it for me.
All right, well, go down the line here, Bethany?
Well, you've covered a lot. I just thought my comments were, there was a lot in questions two. We talked about when if there's a lot to read, they might not, they might skim through it, and I just found that to be a lot. Maybe, I mean, do we have to have, do we narrow it down a little bit more, or do we have to have which five statements? Could it be three statements that stick out? But that was just my comment, that it just felt like a lot of reading, and I didn't wanna discourage people right off the bat with the second question, or put it at the end, because if you get the easy questions first, how old are you, where do you live? If you get those ones first, you might stick with it.
That's true.
That was it, and I guess I just thought too, with the dissatisfied, satisfied, I, I didn't know how important it was to have the six categories, you know, or if you're either yes, no, or don't care, or in the middle, you know, and I always knew that when you're taking polls, if you're neutral or above, or, you know, it's, they judge it. If you pick the middle ones, they're just looking for the end ones, so why not just keep the end ones? I don't know, however you guys wanna. That was it.
Steven?
Yeah, I mean, some minor errors, like do you live in Medford or not?
Oh, where did you find that? Because I couldn't refine that.
The problem is, is this is cut and paste. They do this for every township they go to, so, you know, somebody's already paid for all this work and they just say, instead of like XYZ township, they just plug in market township. That's why some of these questions, like, how much independent senior living options do we have now in a township?
We have a couple.
Do we?
Senior living.
Independent senior living options.
Yeah.
And assisted senior living facilities in market township?
I don't know that we have, I don't know.
Why don't I be asking, do we need more of them? You know, this is purely, purely cut and paste. It's not, you know, focused in on market township, it's just generic township, and they just put in, you know.
Yeah, so do we want them to take it out?
We're paying a lot of money for, just, you know, a redundant kind of a thing, if you ask me, but.
Well, they have to start somewhere, so now they're asking us, so do you think we should take it out?
I don't think, I don't know if we'll take it out, but I just think that it's just, you know, I think that'll be, the onus would have been on them to say, hey, there's no senior living facilities there, what are we putting in question, should there be more? You know, I mean, if, if, if they're getting into the township and doing research in here, you know, why, why put that kinda stuff in there? I've seen these on architectural plans too, versus, you know, in the city of Green Bay, and you go, oh, they didn't change that line on their drawing, you know.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just cut and paste, cut and paste, cut and paste.
Yeah, so.
I think there is that one assisted senior living option on Erickson, that goes along the highway there, behind the highway? Or no, it's not Erickson, it comes out by the mall there. It's like a Lutheran.
Warner? Oh, on Warner Street, it is, it's a Lutheran one. I don't think, I don't know if that's assisted, I think people just rent there. But it's low, it, it's for seniors.
That was assisted.
It, it might be, and then we do have some.
Yeah, I missed it, but.
We do have some homes where the state houses people that can't live independently in the township, in Trowbridge. So, and then, you know, we have that, whatever it's called, over on Brookton, Bible? Brook, whatever that road is, all the pretty trees are. Yes?
What else, Steven?
No, I, yeah, I think it's, it's a good generic questionnaire.
I think on number eleven, sorry to jump in.
No, 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 please.
Can we just ask what municipality reside in? Have them write it in, or do you think they just put Nagani and forget to put Nagani Township? Or do you think people let put, or you can add what municipality reside in, is it a township?
Or?
And you have to list them all out.
Keep the market, charter township option, eliminate the rest, keep the other right in, and just have a.
Yep, and that Medford one was on question thirteen, it was the last.
I was looking for that.
I went for the last.
I went through this fifty times.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, what about adding on seven, for housing development? Unless I'm missing it, but I don't see it. More manufactured, or more tiny homes? Yeah, I don't see tiny homes in there at all.
We don't ha, we don't have a minimum size requirement, do we?
We do, one thousand square feet, if it doesn't meet the tiny home requirements and they don't get the special use permit for a tiny home.
The city does not, right? Because I'm pretty sure I asked Andrea that the other time, that other municipalities do, but we do not, was her answer, and I kept thinking, oh, was I getting that confused with the township? So I thought that was interesting that the city doesn't.
Doesn't have one?
They don't have a minimum square footage, at least that was the email she sent me.
That is one thing in our ordinance that is kind of a, not to get too off topic here, but not an error, but it's something that stands out, the minimum square footage for a single family home is a thousand square feet, but the maximum square footage for a tiny home, as we define it, is four fifty. So between four fifty-one and nine ninety-nine, we don't account for and don't allow. There are avenues, like through the BZA, that they could apply for a seven hundred and fifty square foot house, like it's denied by staff, and they can go before the BZA, but that's kind of a jumping through hoops type of thing to kind of build what they want. So that is something that, again, Jason and I are aware of, and when and if we ever do get to an ordinance update, when, I should say, we get to an ordinance update, that is something that we would explore and not eliminating, but changing to account for kind of that missing square footage. But that is something that, I don't get calls often about it, but people call up and say they wanna build a seven hundred square foot home, and I have to say, well, sorry, because.
Our ordinance doesn't allow it. So that's a good point, Lynn, if we put that on there, and then this helps us plan it, if people would like to see that, we would get their responses.
And I don't think we allow mobile homes, trailers, we do not allow trailers in Trowbridge Park.
We do not, we don't outright.
It says parks though. It says mobile home parks.
We don't have a mobile home park, but we don't allow, we don't allow trailers.
If there's a park, we wouldn't allow them in there either.
I, I don't know, it says more of them.
Probably just one of those things, Steve, that they've cut and paste.
Yeah, right.
You know, why don't we just have tiny homes being a thousand square feet and less? Because I lived in an eight hundred square foot home for a long time.
Yeah. Danny wants the part, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what's coming around right now, again.
Especially if it costs three hundred dollars a square foot to build.
And what about, I can't remember what exactly you call it, but maybe an accessory home, like if you put a small. Yeah, on.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Because I know we were kinda talking about that before.
Take the mobile home park thing off.
Yeah.
Add ADUs, yeah. You'll have to spell it out though, because.
And add tiny homes.
Or homes.
And I, I do think that splitting those two out, tiny homes as well and ADUs as another, not putting them together.
Oh, yeah, no.
Splitting them out would be the wisest thing to do. Again, then you run into the, is this getting too long, but I think just adding those two with as much as we've talked about them here and as much as we staff hear about them from people calling, from residents calling, I think it would be a very wise thing to do is to add them, so.
Also, number six, I'm gonna ask more kind of type of development. Instead of residential growth, could we break that down maybe a little bit more? And, like, ask a question about subdivisions versus just residential growth, or add subdivisions in there instead of just residential growth, because what, you know, what kind of residential growth? Are people opposed to some, you know, like, like Longyear?
Yeah, Plaid Unit Developments, yeah.
You know, what, what do people think of that whole thing?
Oh, yeah. What's that generic term for that?
And you could even go as far as, you know, the density, right, with the figure of higher density, lower density, keep it the same.
Yeah, it's something that I'll, I'll relay back to Jason and the consulting team, and, because I, I agree with you, that would be maybe good to split that out into a couple, maybe a couple different categories, I'm, I'm not, I'm struggling to come up with exactly what you would say, but, yeah, like, I see your point.
Kind of the big issue with Longyear right now is, you know, the, the density of it, so, you know, I'd, I'd kinda be interested to see what people think about that in general, I know what the people in John Woods think. You know, we, we heard about that, but, you know, what about everybody else?
And that's about lot size.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So they're planning still to have this finalized and out to people in August?
Yes.
They, they, I shared with them that they can set up a booth at Community Day, and so they'll be across from the welcome booth.
So who can take the survey?
And he's.
Anybody?
Anybody.
Yeah.
You don't have to live in the township, you don't have to.
No, I think that.
Own property in the township, you don't have to work in the township, you can just, anybody can pick this up.
That's, that's why that question is on there of where do you reside? Because obviously, I think we would give more credence to township residents and property owners, business owners included in there too, but I think any and all responses we get is, the more data, the better.
They'll just sort it then?
Right.
Sort it by.
I'm sure they'll target trying to get it to the township residents, like we said, mailers at the community event, but anybody can. I took the cities.
I'm gonna go around to my neighborhood, I, I thought about that, I live in Trowbridge, and we're, you know, there's, there are lot sizes. They are, they are a hundred and twenty, or a hundred, I don't know if I so deep. So, you know, I have pretty, pretty many neighbors, I'll call it. So, yeah, I'm gonna either have coffee or something, I, I mean, I think we should encourage people to do that. We talked about that at the township board, encouraging people to, you, you really want your residents to fill this out, I don't know how the city got. I filled the cities out.
I did too.
Yeah, because I think they need to know what, you know, we're very connected, if you think.
And that's what people will think here too.
Yeah.
And then I think at the end of the cities, didn't you get to see the results of the way people, how people were answering them? I think I got to see, like, right when you're finished it, that you got to.
Did it show you?
Many, or said, you know, you got to see some of the results.
Was that for their master plan, I'm pretty sure, so, yeah, because they just updated their land development code too, which serves.
It was less, it must have been last year.
Yeah, and their, their plan, their preliminary plan is out there, it's pretty long.
You got to read people's comments too, so you did get to see the results.
But, you know, we're doing it at the same time, if we think about it, so things are, the world has changed in ten years, a lot in this community. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think housing is the biggest, biggest one.
Yeah, well, and, yeah, well, that's what people are looking at, I wish there, I wish there was more employment for people to bring. I guess we'll have to work on that.
Well, if there's something else, those are all good comments, and like I said, I'll relay them back with township and the consulting team. And I'm sure once those are incorporated, we'll send out an updated draft, and then hopefully soon after that, it will go live, so.
Anyone else have any other comments regarding this? Okay, we'll move on to six B, property maintenance discussion and draft light ordinance review. Okay, Eric?
So included in your packet is a variety of property maintenance related documents, including the township ordinance book index, which shows those different property maintenance ordinances that have been enacted over the years. The abbreviated ordinance from nineteen ninety-seven, we retyped it just to make it easier to read, which is also included. The citizen concern or complaint form, which is something I'll have complainants fill out when they do submit a complaint about a property, sometimes I'll be filling it out myself if I'm receiving a complaint over the phone. Being, this, number five, the enforcement process sheet, that is a new document, all the rest of these have been existing since we were, talked, we talked about this at the last meeting, but that enforcement sheet is a new one and kind of reflects what has been requested by the planning commission as far as the process, and then some of those kind of the basic ordinance requirements are all included there. And then beyond that is a draft light ordinance. Steve had sent us Powell Township's light ordinance, and we copied and pasted it, and then also added, I, myself and Jason added a few other categories, you could say, to make sure that stuff that we enforce in the existing ordinance was covered by this one, so including junk vehicles, and I think I added like a long grass item in there too, to make sure that all that was covered and we weren't kind of leaving anything behind, so to speak. So these are all there for your review, I would be happy to answer any questions should you have them. And kind of just like what we did with the survey, I would be open to any suggestions for changes or edits to the draft light ordinance. This draft light ordinance would allow for us as staff to be a little bit more aggressive with enforcement. For some of those problem properties, we'd be able to move straight to a municipal civil infraction rather than kind of going through the sending letters and all of that, so. And the existing property maintenance ordinance is pretty antiquated, and this, I think, streamlines it. Really boiled it down to what we wanna see as township staff and residents as far as property maintenance goes. So like I said, I'd be open to any suggestions for changes or edits, or any questions.
Well, let's, let's see what Steve thinks about all this.
Yeah, I, I think to define a junk vehicle, so, a junk vehicle is, if it's licensed and insured, but it's, and there's like ten of them stored there, that's legal? On the property? I mean, if it's, if it's considered roadworthy, I mean, what, what's the definition of that? Because I looked it up, the Michigan Vehicle Code says it's, it's suitable for use on the, on the, on the public road.
Yep.
What does that entail, working blinkers, what, brakes, what, all the windows work?
As in the, the draft light ordinance.
Yeah. Yeah.
Junk vehicles under item, let's see. Section three definitions, letter D, junk vehicle. This was one that I added to that blight ordinance that you sent from Powell Township, cause it was not included. So it is largely cribbed from our existing.
Yeah.
Ordinance as far as how we defined it.
Yeah.
So under that first paragraph with A, B, C, D, um, it states that it is defined as a junk vehicle unless it is in operating condition and ha- meets all those four requirements. So if it's got two flat tires and otherwise runs fine.
Right, 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 but it, but, but, but the, the wording in here says that unless the vehicle is operating commissioned and it meets all the requirements for public highway uses set forth in the Michigan Vehicle Code and in addition meets the following requirements. So what are the, what are the conditions, the requirements of the Michigan Vehicle Code for use on a public highway? That is in addition to having four wheels, four tires on it and a battery. You know what I'm saying?
Yep, I do.
It's, it's not that, the, the code says that it has to have these, it says that it has to meet all the requirements of the code and in addition has this.
Right.
But, so. Again, I don't see where it lists that you can have one vehicle that, you know, is not titled or insured or something on your property, but and then, and then, and then what happens? What happens to those, those ten vehicles that somebody has that are junk vehicles? Do they get taken from him? Is it a taking?
It would be impound by the sheriff's department.
What do they do with it then?
They can do the impound law.
And that, but, I mean, if they're junk vehicles, nobody's gonna try to get them out there, so are they keeping there indefinitely or?
Yep. I, that's a good question. I can find out about that process. Um, last, the first time we issued a ticket against the owners of, uh, seven sixty Lake Enchantment, we never got to the point of towing the vehicles, but we, I did start correspondence, cause sheriff's office told me that they won't do it within their organization. So they contract those services out or they depend on local towing companies to go and do that for them, or for, in, in this instance, for the township. So I had started correspondence with a few towing companies in the area to do that. And on their end, it sounded like it was a pretty intricate and complicated process as far as confirming the title and all these other things. And it did not sound, from my conversations with those few companies that I contacted, it did not sound like it is something they do often, so.
Yeah, so it, it's a sticky thing. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, is dangerous buildings. Because I went into Michigan Compiled Laws, there's been dangerous building ordinances on the books since nineteen seventeen. And I think a lot of this stuff is cribbed from those as well. My question is that the images that I sent you of the building that I had concerns about on the southwest corner of Lake Enchantment fit those definitions to a T. Why, why hasn't that building been ordered to be re- either repaired or razed? That's what I wanna know.
We have been in contact with, so due to our existing ordinance, we don't quite have the teeth to go in and.
Okay. So even, even though Michigan Compiled Law gives you that right, the fact that you don't stipulate that in any of our ordinances?
We're going to depend on, and we've tried to be in, not tried, we've been in contact with them. Unable to coordinate with them, but we've been in contact with market county building codes.
Yeah.
Lean on them, much like we lean on them for.
According to this, it doesn't have to be, it can be a township code official, a township official that's designated for this purpose that does that. It doesn't have to be a county building code. It can be somebody within the township organization that has been, uh, said, you are that person that's responsible, take care of this stuff. That can be done too. If the market building code is reticent to do it, nuts to them, let's take that responsibility on ourselves.
Okay, sure.
Would make sense.
Yep.
I mean, if they're not gonna touch it, who is? Right? The other thing they got, you know, there's, there's actually a structure ready to fall into the lake. Literally fall into the lake. Does Eagle have anything to do with that? Structures that fall into a water body?
I would think so.
Well, you know, I mean, think so, schmink so. It's been like, for years. I mean, you know, wishing and hoping and all this kinda stuff. I mean, unless, unless we do something, people aren't gonna do jack. They're just gonna keep, you know, ignoring tickets, citations. I don't have the money, I don't have the time, I'll do it next week. You give them thirty days. Oh, you know, my brother-in-law is gonna help me haul this kinda stuff. I mean, nothing's gonna happen. And if you look at this, I got one from Lillina Township too. And it's a junk and inoperable vehicle ordinance. And the purpose of their ordinance is to limit the outdoor storage of junk, which protects adjacent property values. Does our state say that anywhere in there? I think it should say that in there. We're doing this to protect people's property values. You know, because as I'm well aware, I have a, I have a friend who's, who's an appraiser, he said, you're screwed. You'll never get the value of your house out of it with that, literally on your property line, that blight that's right there. No one's gonna wanna buy your property and have to look at that. So, I mean, what's my recourse? Litigation? Holy moly, I'm not gonna go down without swinging.
But that's, Steve, that's why we started this process and we're, we're moving ahead with it.
But the, the emails I sent you, I've been doing this since twenty twenty at least.
I know, but.
At least.
I wasn't.
At least.
I wasn't here then.
Well.
And I can tell you, there's a place in Market Township, someone emailed me again today, right over in Trowbridge. It needs to get cleaned up, and so we're, we're moving.
You can understand my frustration. This has been at least, at least four years of email trails, plus phone calls and letters and that kinda stuff. And it's like, nothing happens. Nobody gives a rat's about my concerns. It's a, ooh, we don't wanna upset this guy, we don't wanna make sure that, you know, all this kinda stuff. Nuts to that. In fact, the, your attorney said, well, we're not gonna go after the other property owners. Go after the other property owners. They, that's their property, that junk is on their property. What's in space does not live out there.
So that's why we're doing that.
That's why we're starting this.
Yeah. It's gonna take a bit, cause it kinda works like that in government.
We're gonna.
Well, 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 my question is, why didn't we start this five, six, seven years ago when I said, hey, there's a big problem out here?
But we don't know.
Better late than ever, yes.
Better late than ever. God, I hope I don't die before this is done.
Me too.
Well, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're trying to work on it right now.
Oh, no, I appreciate, and I, I appreciate that a great deal, but it's just the frustration level that is.
I, I, I know, I haven't, I haven't.
You saw it. What did you say? It's the worst you've ever seen?
Oh, it's terrible.
Ha, it's on a lake.
Never thought it was that bad.
Oh, yeah, it's that bad.
It's absolutely terrible.
Oh, it's horrible.
Wouldn't believe it. I mean, you should take it, you all should.
Should we all go on a tour?
I don't know.
Maybe we could snap some pictures and post them.
You did and sent them.
I sent you emails, I'm just.
You have to be there in person.
Well, that was before, it's, it's, it's all changed. It's just, you know, it's worse, and, you know, it's just different worse.
I mean, you don't.
It's a lot like a lot like.
I could see for that property is demolition. That would be the easiest thing to do. You can't just clean that up. You have to demolish it.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand that.
It's all just junk, and there, it's nothing worth, that's worth fixing. Nobody would wanna fix that up, so, you know, the, the other thing, um, is I didn't see anything in here about condemnation. Would that be another avenue? And if it's condemned, would that be easier to just say, we gotta get that, all that stuff down and taken out of there? And does that give you better options if it's condemned? Cause I don't, I don't see anything in here where it talks about condemnation.
Cause I do condemn buildings, but I don't know if you can condemn junk that's.
Well, if you condemn a building and then you say it has to be demolished, everything has to be taken out of there, yeah.
But in, in the, the instance there, the cottage itself is it's okay. So you couldn't really condemn it. I mean, on what basis would you condemn that, the cottage where the, 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 all that junk is? It's just, you know, it's just, you know, my lot in life is just my luck of the draw, that I happen to be next to it and nothing's happening.
But it, it's, it's so bad and there's so much there. And nobody's living there.
No.
You know, what, what is ever gonna happen to that property?
It's being used to store stuff.
I can see is to just have somebody go in there and haul everything away.
Well, that's kinda what has happened to that, but, you know, whatever they hauled last year, they just brought back new stuff. Just mo- new stuff. You know, all that lumber and crap that you hauled out of there, it's just, now it's just like garage doors and pallets and.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's a health hazard, actually.
Health hazard. I'd be, I, I think, I think Eagle should go make sure that there's no oil that's leaking out of those vehicles and getting into the groundwater and going into that lake.
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, just the garbage that's there and, you know, it.
Oh, it's horrible, it's horrible.
Department could be involved in that also.
It's horrible.
You know, because it, it's just a nuisance, it's, it's something that should just all be loaded up and carted away, because there's, there's nothing of value there.
Well, one man's trash is another man's trash, you know.
Sorry for my comment to.
What's that?
Are you ready for the rest of the comments?
Yes.
Okay, so I would really like this complaint form to be electronic.
Okay.
I, I, I think people wanna track that it was sent, and I don't think, um, our paper system does that. And I think, um, it's just a, it's just a document. We can put it on our webpage.
Sure.
And.
If I want it anonymously to you.
I do want it anonymously. Some people do not want their neighbors to know.
You don't, and I tell people that.
It says that.
Fill that out, and I tell people over the phone, you can stay anonymous. I do usually, over the phone, I usually ask.
Who they are, yeah.
Their address or where they live in relation. Um, in some cases, I'll ask them if I can use their property to go take photos if I need to, or inspect the problem property. Uh, but I do always say that if you wanna remain, remain anonymous, you are free to do so, so.
Perfect. Um, get, I guess this was a lot for me to look at.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess when, um, you can put it, so here's the proposed enforcement code. Back here to look at? Is this just all just? This?
That's the list of all the township ordinances, just to show where.
Where it was. Okay, so I don't really need to know that.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I think it's a step forward. I think that's all we can do is keep moving a step forward. I will tell you, I did get an, um, I did get a, um, message today from someone who said to me, I'm gonna read this into the record because, um, I did invite them to come, but I think I am. They did send it to me, so I think I need to read it into the record. Soon as I find it. Oh, of course, when you wanna find it, it's not right where you thought it was, right? Well. Maybe it was. Since I can't find it, I will just say that the person wanted to know what they should do because nothing's been done about what they reported. And so I suggest that they come to the planning commission meeting and present, but I can see that they weren't able to come for some reason or another. I did drive by the property again last night, and it looks just as bad as it did the first time I drove by, and I know we're working on it. And, um, that's the best I can tell them, but I'm gonna give them your phone number, Eric, okay? Because I feel like, um, when they come to us as planning commissioners, it's our job to follow through, and so you get them next. Yeah, washing machines and old cars and just junk and, and Trowbridge isn't that big, okay? I don't want that next door to me either. So I don't blame them. So thank you for being patient with me, but I lost it. Sorry. I think it's a good step forward, Eric. Thank you for taking on this project.
So if the planning commission, uh, I guess is agreeable with this draft ordinance, um, with those suggested changes, then I would be looking for a motion tonight to forward it along to legal for their review. Obviously, they would make sure that all of our bases are covered, like Jim mentioned, condemnation and maybe some of those other aspects of enforcement that we may be missing in this ordinance, they would make sure those are covered. And we would go from there, so.
I suppose I should ask if anyone, if, if you have any comments about this, since London and Steve did it. Is he, or anything further?
Nope, like, or at all. Nothing further.
Well, I don't know, just, just from looking at all this, it just seems like it's very hard to get things done. And, and, as Steve was notes, and, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's just that property alone, there's other properties too that if the people don't wanna do it, they're just not gonna do it. And you know, where, where do you go? It's, it's, the, the township can't really enforce it. It has to go to court. Has, can the state do more? Can the county do more? You know, who has, who has the most teeth that at their disposal that they can, that they can do something? I mean, I can see this, but can the county do anything more? Than what the township does? Or even, even the state, you know, um, health department.
I mean, we've so much changed our tact recently from keeping it strictly at the township level. Obviously, when we issue a ticket, that goes to circuit court at the county level. But for example, contacting Eagle about the property out in Lake Enchantment and the property on five fifty that had a fire last year. That's kinda new to us. I mean, obviously, it's a, kind of an obvious step, but we haven't done it in the past, and we've done that just on these two properties in the last couple of months. So to answer your question, I think, yes, those other organizations can do more, but anything, any enforcement needs to start with township staff, with us at the township level. Those, unless the situation or the problem is really bad, those organizations aren't gonna start property maintenance enforcement. That's good, it's gotta start with us, so.
Uh, with, with this, with the Lake Enchantment property, have all of the property owners been talked to and, and, I mean, I know before, I think just one of them was getting a letter or?
No, they, but they all get.
They all, I don't know.
When the first time a ticket was issued, they all got a ticket, and any time a letter is sent, all three get a letter, but it's just this last ticket issuance last month, at advice of Roger Zap, our attorney, we issued it just to the occupant.
Is there just a, is there a fine on there that, that you have to pay if it's not done, or what, what's?
That would be determined by the circuit court.
Okay, so that's go to court, then?
And that's where it's at right now, and obviously with circuit court, the way they've been for the last couple of years, they're pretty backed up, so I'm not sure when. I haven't gotten an update from the court as to when that hearing is. But the next step would be a hearing between township staff and our, our legal representation and the ticket receiver and legal representation if he has any, so.
And, and I, I kinda keep going back to the city, Marquette, with, you know, what they do, and I, I know that, um, if something's not done by a certain date, they give you a certain date, and they say, all right, if it's not done by this date, then it's a two hundred and fifty dollar daily fine until it's done. Is, is that possible in the township to do that?
Possible, but the way our ordinance is currently written, as, as how I understand it, and how I was taught to enforce it, that's a, that would be a court, circuit court issue, yeah.
I, I know in the city, they don't have to go to court to do that. They can just, can the township do that then, on their own, without having to go to?
I don't see why not, yeah.
Cause, I mean, that's gonna add up real quick. If it's a, I think the city's even a five hundred dollar fine. So I mean, you go ten days, that's five thousand dollars. I don't know if anybody ever wants to just throw money away like that.
But it's tough to get, you know, blood out of a turnip too, you know? If they got no cash, that, a fine means squat.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. If they, if, if there's no reason to get this cleaned up, they're, you know, they're not gonna do it, and the the only thing that I can see would make somebody do it is money. And, you know, if the township can do that and say, this is what it's gonna cost you. Plus, if it's not done by a certain date, we'll have it done, and then you'll have to pay for that also, we'll charge you for it. And, you know, that, that's also in the city, the city can do that. And go on the tax bill.
And we have done that in the past.
So, but you just kinda have to go through the motions here, and, you know, with the circuit court, and with what you have now. So could, could we change this, where it would be two hundred and fifty dollars a day, five hundred dollars a day, whatever, you know, if it's not done, and when it's supposed to be done?
Certainly something that we could explore, yeah.
Is that what six A says? Um, in the, toward the end of our packet, it says.
Where's it say?
Six, look at six A, it says a five hundred dollar per each such infraction. Every day that a violation continues to exist shall constitute a separate infraction.
Oh, I didn't see that. Where's that?
It, um, go to page three, I only have a couple pages left, so it's way at the back. It's their proposed um, blight ordinance. It's way there, so go to page three under section six.
Further to the back.
It's not three, what, what page is it in though?
No, further to the back, go to the back.
Further, further, keep going.
Like the slow last, the second to the last page.
Yeah.
Second, last page.
Mm-hmm. One more. Yep, and now. One more. Yep, and now...
Oh, and chocolate townships.
No.
Well, it just says...
Chocolate township.
It says Charter Township of Marquette Blight Ordinance.
Oh, okay, I thought this was just...
You thought it was...
All right, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So it is $500. Now, do we have teeth to do that, is my question?
Well, like I said, this, the draft ordinance that...
Mm-hmm. We have to bring to legal first.
But that, like I said, that this would repeal and replace the existing ordinance. And this one has a much more streamlined process. We can move straight to the ticket, and then that could start.
Yeah.
Whereas the existing one, we give notice and notice and notice.
Notice and notice. And then it becomes winter, and then we start all over.
Yep.
Right, mm-hmm.
Yeah, there you go.
So we want it stronger. We want to go after those buildings that are left vacant, that are being used by probably not intended renters that aren't paying. Yeah, we have a lot of stuff going on. You can babysit a long time.
The whole issue with this also is, you know, I mean, who goes out there and says what has to be done?
Does the inspection have to?
Do you guys have to do something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
If you go up to that, have you been up to that place? Steve's?
Oh, yeah, several times.
How, how do you even start to say, I mean, there's so much stuff to get done there. You'd have to have the five pages of this has to be done and that. And plus, that's going to take up so much of your time to do that. It's, it's just like, you know, can you just say you're going to get fined if you guys don't just clean this up in general instead of saying, you know, what exactly has to be done? That's kind of what the issue is.
Well, we did talk about hiring a blight officer. That probably won't happen until next year. We're already in July. We're going to have snow in September, right? So...
Snow in September.
So, I, you know, I don't know, yeah. It's a, it's a hard job to...
Yeah.
It's a hard job.
It is.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. But we don't wash clothes on the front porch in Marquette, so get rid of that washing machine, right?
Well, you know, the, the ordinance that was approved in, um, 97 has a fee structure in there. That's, that's a municipal fee structure. That's our fee structure. Why can't we use that fee structure? Because it's, we're still currently on the books, isn't it? I don't understand why we can't say it. It says we can. Okay? The provincial ordinance i- is responsible for a municipal civil infraction, municipal civil infraction as defined with Michigan law and a charter township Marquette. And it lists the, the costs. So why aren't we using that? That has nothing to do with circuit court. We've already established that we can do this in this, so why don't we find them per day?
We, we can look into that.
Okay, well, I mean, it's right here. It's been on the books almost for what, 27 years?
Yeah.
Where, where exactly are you looking now?
Yeah.
The ordinance that was established in July 1st of 1997...
What page is that?
First page, section three, minimum fines, maximum fines, violations. First violation, second violation, third violation. I mean, it, 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 it spells it out right there, so I don't know why we can't use that.
Jim, if you start at the beginning, where the staff report is, it's just like three. Third or fourth page? Yeah, you're on it. Right here.
Yep, that's what I'm looking at right now.
Yeah, so it establishes fees, fines.
So can the township just do that without having to go to court then? And just, uh, find them, start finding them for this?
I...
He's going to check in, too.
I know you'll have to check.
Yeah, and that's, I know, that's not something I want to hypothesize.
No, I know, I, 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 it's just a rhetorical question, kind of like, to find out if this is possible, then. All right, well, we'll get answers at the next meeting, then. And so what, what did you say before? You'd like us to...
I, if, if everybody's amenable...
Commend to...
Yep, if everybody's amenable to the draft ordinance with those edits we've talked about tonight, um, I would be looking for a motion to forward it onto legal for their review.
I'll make that...
I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable calling that a final, final thing and having, you know, I think we should have a couple whacks at her first, okay? I mean, we can, we can have the legal people look at it now to make sure, you know, has, doesn't have any problems with it that we don't know about. But I think we should at least, you know...
Well, would you rather me make these changes, staff make these changes that we've talked about, come back next meeting?
I would like to see that, yeah.
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 That works.
That would be a good idea.
Because, you know, we don't want to be doing this every three years, going, man, we should have put that in the last...
Yeah.
We should, you know, do it now if we're going to do it.
Hey, so we don't, we don't make a motion, we're just...
Yeah, no, no motion.
Put it on your agenda for, um, the next meeting?
Yep.
Which would be 28th or 24th? Okay. All right, are we all done with that? Unfinished business, none at this time. Correspondence, none at this time, correct? Haven't gotten anything since then. Reports, township board report, Linda.
Okay, the township board met on Wednesday, July 3rd at 5:30. We, um, talked again about tipping fee increasing per ton and how that's all going to work out. Um, it will probably mean that there will be an increase in the solid waste fee on your bill, but we're not there yet. We did waive the policies and get the road closed for community day. Gosh.
Is that...
We didn't meet very long, I guess.
Would that, sorry to interrupt, is that Cherry Street that would be closed?
Uh, I have the thing. Do you want me to send it to you? From this road commission that ran, that, um, John King just sent me. I will send it to you, so you know. I think it's Cherry. And it's not Olive Cherry, it's like a block.
It's not a block.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. So, um, yeah. We, we should all be a little bit, um, following along with what's going on at the solid waste facility. Just so we know, because our customers might be asking us a little bit about that. Questions? Comments?
Okay, uh, rock committee report? If there's one.
Nothing to report. They do meet next week, Jason said.
And no road committee report either?
No, we did not meet last week, which would have been our regularly scheduled meeting. Like I said at the last meeting, uh, we canceled it due to the holiday and really just kind of no agenda, I don't see.
And what do you have for planning and zoning?
Nothing really substantial to report. Uh, conversations, and I may defer to Lynn on this one, if she doesn't mind, but conversations continue with Michigan Veterans Homes about, uh, the new possible Jacob Benny facility here. Um, those are a little bit above my, angry, so to speak, not, haven't been involved in those conversations, so, um, I'm not sure what can be reported, if anything.
Yeah, I haven't either. It's at John's level.
Okay.
But there's still, um, sorry.
Good timing, Kate.
Yeah.
It's time to go home. They, they're trying to figure out, um, placement. They've got a site plan, right? I guess they submitted that.
I, I, and that's something that I don't think staff has seen, the site plan.
I, I guessed. I said right away, I told John what was going to happen, and he goes, they'd never do that. And I said, they're going to ask to abandon the road. And he goes, why would they do that? Anyway, I figured that's what they do. So they are talking about possibility of kind of rerouting that part of venture to go up toward Meyer. That was on the, what did he say, the transportation plan or the future land or, um, road something?
Yeah, and this was discussed at the downtown development authority meeting on Tuesday or yesterday?
Yesterday.
Just yesterday, yeah. Um... So the present, again, this is nothing official, because we don't have any plans in hand to review, but the preliminary proposed plan from Michigan Veteran Homes apparently would be to abandon, or they would want to abandon the right, the venture right of way from, is it the one that curves around here?
It'd have to be, what I'm guessing, the way he described it is, from the church's property, which would cover the state, um, lampary site from there back, I think. Because that's, that's 38 acres. There's like 20 on one side and 18 on the other or something. So I think that's what they would abandon. So the fire department and the, um, church would be able to access their property in the, you know, right on the corner.
Yeah.
I think that's the way I understood it.
Right. So as you can see, there's a lot of talk going around. We're not quite sure of what exactly they're proposing yet. Um, so obviously, there'll be more on that at, at future meetings. Uh, but we will certainly keep you apprised of any development, so.
So does that come to the planning commission or the township board, or does that just go to the road commission?
Site plan should come to you.
I, right, but the road abandonment is what I'm wondering.
Yeah, the road commission has to...
Yeah.
Integrate that and ask us.
Yeah.
But we did it on hearing for the park.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it didn't cause as much of a fervor because we owned both sides.
Yeah, yeah, this is a little bit of a, this is a well-traveled road, that road is.
What did they say? Was 600 cars a day?
Yep, road commission put up some traffic counters.
Yeah.
At, I think at the request, it sounded like of Michigan Veterans Homes, uh, and the count was at like 600 per day, so.
Yeah, that's an exit out of Trowbridge Park for people to get to the US 41 strip without going on the highway.
I'm really kind of hoping that it's going to be some impetus for a forest bill. I think the increased traffic and the, the strain that it's going to put on this section of the township is going to be a plus for giving something to happen there.
That was part of our discussion yesterday at the DVA. If they do abandon the right way and don't reroute it, that's going to push traffic to 41 and to everybody's favorite intersection over here. So that's where that, the impetus would come in to fix that intersection.
Mm-hmm.
So, again, very preliminary, all these things. So nothing official yet, but we'll keep you apprised.
So anything else good happening? That's, I mean, you know, it's all good.
Nothing, again, nothing really substantial. A lot of just kind of day-to-day permit applications, things like that, as far as commercial development. Um, I know Jason's been in conversations with brokers here and there, but nothing, nothing official I can report this time, so.
Okay. Any, uh, announcements? Any more public comment? Nothing from Reg.
I just wanted to listen.
Okay, um, additional comments by planning commissioners?
Yeah, I wanted to commend, um, Jen Hill and, uh, our state senator up here, I forget his name. Cass, no, no, not Cass, we're saying Ed McBroom. They were able to, uh, get some funding, uh, for various projects in, uh, the county. Uh, they've assisted in the paydown of the Marquette Historical Regional, uh, Regional History Centers mortgage. Uh, they got a million dollars to assist in the paydown on it, which, which was a very nice thing to do. Uh, they didn't ask, they didn't ask for a, um, break from the FDA similar to what the Lakeview Arena got. So they were paying that mortgage as they went along, but apparently the, um, our local representative thought it was a good idea to assist them with that project. They still have money left on that, on the, uh, on the mortgage, but it was a, a lovely thing for the state to do.
Can't be much more, because it was, wasn't...
Couple hundred thousand.
Yeah.
I think they, they've already paid off 2.6, 2.8, something like that, so. And it, and what people don't realize is it's purely a nonprofit privately. There's no county funding, no state funding, no municipal funding, nothing for that organization. It is all private donations, so, um, it was, it was good.
You say Lakeview Arena, do you mean the Y?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, excuse me.
I was going to say, I don't think they're really...
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
They don't get our money.
Yeah, when they, uh, when they got rid of that mortgage for them.
Anything else?
Nope, that's good.
Bethany?
Nothing to me.
Linda?
Nope, I'm good.
Uh, the only thing I wanted to add is I was, uh, I kind of forgot about Denny's email to all of us today about adding those, uh, survey questions in, just to make sure that he was kind of...
And I, I've got that email, copy of that right here. Did I not mention that during my little staff part? Okay, I'm sorry about that. I intended to, and I, I intended to say that those will be included. Yeah, thank you.
That's all I have, so meeting adjourned. All right.